Take their seats please. I'd like to call this Tuesday, March 13th, 2012, Longmont City Council meeting to order. This is a regular session. Can we please start with the roll call?
Mayor Coombs. Mayor Protem Santos.
Here.
Council members Bagley.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Levison.
Present.
Witt.
Here.
Mayor Protem Santos, we have a quorum.
Thank you. If we could have a representative from the Girl Scouts to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please.[856.11][856.11](Laughter) Hold on one second, let us all stand up first. Thank you. A chair reminder to the public, anyone wishing to speak at first call, public invited to be heard, will need to add his or her name to the list outside the city council chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at the first call, public invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their names on the list will have an opportunity to speak during the public hearing items this evening or at final call, public invited to be heard at the end of the meeting. We have minutes from February 28th. Is there any corrections? Council member Witt.
Mayor Protem, I'd like to move the minutes of February 28th.
Second.
It's been moved to second, any other discussion? Let's vote. It's working out, seeing all the names. It passes with council member Levison and mayor Coombs absent. Gordon, are there any agenda revisions?
Grand council, one agenda revision, I'd like to add a new item 9G under consent, and it will involve a revision to the new city manager's employment agreement, and it will change the effective date from April 2nd to March 19th. And that's the only change in it, I believe there was one other typo that somebody caught in the redline version. So this will become item 9G on your consent agenda if the city council agrees.
Okay. Is there any questions regarding that addition? Okay. City manager's report.
Mayor, I do have a report, and Phil is going to update you on RTD.
Hi, Phil.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, members of council, I'm Phil Greenwald, transportation planner with the city of Longmont's Economic Development Department. Tonight, just want to give you a quick update on FastTrax and where we are as of about 5 o'clock this evening. RTD did present, their staff did present on March 7th. Mayor Protem was able to make that meeting, and I accompanied him, and we talked, or we heard about option four from RTD, which is basically bus rapid transit plus. So it's bus rapid transit plus rail to Westminster, so that's the latest option that we've heard from RTD at this time. So they are talking to us about that being a fourth option in their list, and just wanted to let you know that chairman Lee Kemp will be available 6 to 8 p.m. on Thursday, March 15th, if you are available, and that's done so quickly as to get it before they start talking about the options in any further detail, starting March 20th. So I think at this time, we'd like to just pull the city council and find out if that time and date works for anybody, everybody.
I'm available. Does anyone have any scheduling conflicts?
I do.
Okay. Councilmember Smory, you okay? Councilmember Witt?
Uh... Turn your mic.
And what's the purpose of the meeting? I'm available, I'm just concerned that, I've been to a lot of meetings lately that are just for appearance, so I don't want to go to another one.
Mayor Protem and council member Bagley, the purpose of this meeting is really for RTD to explain and answer a number of questions that we have about this newest option. There's not enough information available at this time, there's, it's very, it's a very loose plan right now, as far as how they're going to be able to pay for, basically, rail up through Westminster to the Church Ranch Station is what they're proposing. That takes it all the way through Westminster and up to the edge of Broomfield, and then bus rapid transit for the other pieces of that. So they're going to explain exactly how much that's going to cost, and the different assumptions that they're putting into that plan.
And councilmember Bagley, I asked, talked to chairman Kemp and Phil Washington at that meeting last week, and invited them to come explain to the council and to the residents this new option four, which no one had ever seen until that night on Monday, not even the RTD board had seen it. And I'm kind of hoping that they will come, try to explain that new option.
I will keep an open mind, and I will be there. What's the address?
It's the senior center. And we'll get information out to you and the public prior to that meeting. And also, I just want to say that we are trying to find a time for the 27th, when RTD folks can actually come and make this presentation and answer your questions, and we may have to go without everybody being available, but we want to get as many of you as we possibly can there.
Okay. And also, just a quick note, residents and members of council can also join the FastTrax Citizen Advisory Committee. Their quarterly meeting outreach is on March 21st, Wednesday, from 6 to 8 at Heritage Middle School. So for those folks that are interested in what the Citizens Advisory Committee has to say regarding FastTrax, it might be a good idea to attend. Phil, is there anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Thanks, Phil. Oh, excuse me, councilmember Smory.
Except unfortunately, that Citizens Advisory Committee is the day after the board makes their decision, so I don't know how effective...
Actually, councilmember Smory, the staff, RTD staff will be making a presentation to the subcommittee of FastTrax of the RTD board. They'll be making their recommendation on the 20th. The full RTD board will not make a recommendation till the 28th, 27th, excuse me. So it still would be vital for residents, if you're concerned regarding FastTrax and where the status is, to probably attend that March 21st meeting. Okay. Anything else? Okay. Let's go on to proclamation. Pull up the right screen here. It's a proclamation designating March 12th through the 17th of 2012 as Girl Scout Week. Is there someone that will be receiving the proclamation? Go ahead, go up to the podium. Well, I know there's a banner too, so... All right. Gail, would you like to say anything before I read the proclamation? There's a button, there you go.
This is troop 2150, and at their urging, after looking at all the ideas for celebrating 100 years of Girl Scouts, they said, "Could we really meet the people that run our city?" And we had a city council member come to our meeting last week, Katie Witt came, and they were very thrilled to learn about how this works, and also excited about the opportunity of meeting you guys in your chambers. So thank you for inviting us and helping us do the proclamation, and on behalf of all the Girl Scouts here in Longmont, we gratefully accept this recognition. Thank you.
Great. What I'll do is I'll read the proclamation, and I know you have a little bit more of a presentation to make, so let me go and read the proclamation. A proclamation designating March 12th through the 17th of 2012 as Girl Scout Week in Longmont, Colorado. Whereas Monday, March 12th, 2012, marks the 100th anniversary of the Girl Scouts of the USA, founded in 1912 by Juliette Gordon Lowe in Savannah, Georgia. And whereas the Girl Scouts, the largest organization for girls in the world, is the leading authority and advocate for girls, inspiring millions of girls and women with the highest ideals of courage, confidence, and character. And whereas the Girl Scouts organization is a safe place for girls to explore their world, develop an understanding and empathy for others, and take action to make the world a better place. And whereas through leadership experiences that build self-confidence, creative decision-making skills, and teamwork, girls develop real-world leadership abilities that will last them a lifetime in Girl Scouts. And whereas scouting is for every girl everywhere, and is dedicated to serving members from all racial, ethnic, cultural, religious, and social economic groups. And whereas more than 3.3 million current Girl Scouts members nationwide will be celebrating 100 years of an American tradition by teaching girls an innovative program to help them succeed. Now therefore I, Gabriel A. Santos, by virtue of the authority vested in me and the city council of the city of Longmont, do hereby proclaim the week of March 12th through the 17th as Girl Scout Week in Longmont, and I invite all citizens in the community to be aware of the special and vital services provided by the Girl Scouts of America Organization.
Woo-hoo! (Applause) Big voices! This song was written by someone in honor of the 100-year celebration.
There you go.
Does anyone have any scheduling conflicts? Okay. Councilmembers Smory, you okay? Councilmember Witt? Councilmember Bagley?
Turn your mic.
And what's the purpose of the meeting? I'm available. I'm just concerned that, I've been to a lot of meetings lately that are just for appearance. So I don't want to go to another one.
Mayor Pro Tem and councilmember Bagley, the purpose of this meeting is really for RTD to explain and answer a number of questions that we have about this newest option. There's not enough information available at this time. There's, it's very, it's a very loose plan right now, as far as how they're going to be able to pay for basically rail up through Westminster to the Church Ranch Station is what they're proposing. That takes it all the way through Westminster and up to the edge of Broomfield, and then bus rapid transit for the, for the other pieces of that. So they're going to explain exactly how much that's going to cost, and the different assumptions that they're putting into that plan.
Okay. And councilmember Bagley, I asked, talked to Chairman Kemp and Phil Washington at that meeting last week, and invited them to come explain to the council and to the residents this new option four, which no one had ever seen until that night on Monday, not even the RTD board had seen it. And I'm kind of hoping that they will come, try to explain that new option.
I will keep an open mind, and I will be there. What's the address?
It'll be at the senior center. And we'll get information out to you and the public prior to that meeting. And also, I just want to say that we are trying to find a time for the 27th, when RTD folks can actually come and make this presentation and answer your questions. And we may have to go without everybody being available, but we want to get as many of you as we possibly can there.
Okay. And also, just a quick note, residents and members of council can also join the FastTrax Citizen Advisory Committee. Their quarterly meeting outreach is on March 21st, Wednesday, from 6 to 8 at Heritage Middle School. So for those folks that are interested in what the Citizens Advisory Committee has to say regarding FastTrax, it might be a good idea to attend. Phil, is there anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Phil. Oh, excuse me. Councilmember Smory.
Except unfortunately, that Citizens Advisory Committee is the day after the board makes their decision. So I don't know how effective.
Actually, councilmember Smory, the staff, RTD staff will be making a presentation to the Subcommittee of FastTrax of the RTD Board. They'll be making their recommendation on the 20th. The full RTD Board will not make a recommendation till the 28th, 27th, excuse me. So it still would be vital for residents, if you're concerned regarding FastTrax and where the status is, to probably attend that March 21st meeting. Okay. Anything else? Okay. Let's go on to proclamation. Pull up the right screen here. It's a proclamation designating March 12th through the 17th of 2012 as Girl Scout Week. Is there someone that will be receiving the proclamation? Go ahead, go up to the podium. Well, I know there's a banner too, so. All right. Gail, would you like to say anything before I read the proclamation? There's a button. There you go.
This is Troop 2150, and at their urging, after looking at all the ideas for celebrating 100 years of Girl Scouts, they said, could we really meet the people that run our city? And we had a city council member come to our meeting last week. Katie Witt came, and they were very thrilled to learn about how this works, and also excited about the opportunity of meeting you guys in your chambers. So thank you for inviting us and helping us do the proclamation. And on behalf of all the Girl Scouts here in Longmont, we gratefully accept this recognition. Thank you.
Great. What I'll do is I'll read the proclamation, and I know you have a little bit more of a presentation to make. So let me go and read the proclamation. A proclamation designating March 12th through the 17th, 2012, as Girl Scout Week in Longmont, Colorado. Whereas Monday, March 12th, 2012, marks the 100th anniversary of the Girl Scouts of the USA, founded in 1912 by Juliette Gordon Lowe in Savannah, Georgia. And whereas the Girl Scouts, the largest organization for girls in the world, is the leading authority and advocate for girls, inspiring millions of girls and women with the highest ideals of courage, confidence, and character. And whereas the Girl Scouts organization is a safe place for girls to explore their world, develop an understanding and empathy for others, and take action to make the world a better place. And whereas through leadership experiences that build self-confidence, creative decision-making skills, and teamwork, girls develop real-world leadership abilities that will last them a lifetime in Girl Scouts. And whereas scouting is for every girl everywhere, and is dedicated to serving members from all racial, ethnic, cultural, religious, and social economic groups. And whereas more than 3.3 million current Girl Scouts, uh, Girl Scout members nationwide will be celebrating 100 years of an American tradition by teaching girls an innovative program to help them succeed. Now therefore, I, Gabriel A. Santos, by virtue of the authority vested in me and the city council of the city of Longmont, do hereby proclaim the week of March 12th through the 17th as Girl Scout Week in Longmont. And I invite all citizens in the community to be aware of the special and vital services provided by the Girl Scouts of America organization.
Woo-hoo! [applause] Big voices! This song was written by someone in honor of the 100 year celebration.
There you go. Of course, then I'll, I'll present you with the proclamation. And I just have a question. I see someone with cookies. Is it too, I'm trying to put a plug in. Is it too late to buy Girl Scout cookies?
Um, the answer to that is actually, um, no.
No.
However, let me deliver these, and then I can...
Oh. Oh, I can't even...
I'll allow you two to sit, please, as you see fit.
Well, we'll just go right here where I normally sit.
But you're supposed to give them to her, and then pass them down.
Okay, sorry.
All right.
I'm so busy charging, sorry. Um, actually, right now, the end of what's called our direct sale... You are interested in purchasing them, you can get ahold of me at our office, or you can go to one of the shops. And for every case that the public buys right now, the Girl Scouts of Colorado will actually be donating to the wounded, wounded, here, Wounded Warrior Project. So they will be going to put a smile on the face of our service-mending women who have been wounded in the last year. So please feel free, it's our, Justin, you have our extra pin, isn't it? We still have some. Our lemon cookie this year is for the 100 year anniversary, so it is a new cookie.
That is very good.
And also, the rest of your favorites around too. So please feel free to not only support the girls and their programs, but also our service-mending women. Thank you.
Well, if we can have all the Girl Scouts come into the middle, right here, and councilmembers, we've been invited to take the picture as well.
Not good for any of us.
Yeah, some more. I just don't want... I'll put the rest of these in the mayor's office for the mayor and councilmember Levison, so they can choose what's left.
Somebody does want some more, so trade.
I think we're good. Gordon, what's...
Mayor, your next item is an update on VIA, which is formerly known as Special Transit in Longmont. And Lena Kopke, the executive director, is here to make a presentation.
Well, that is a really hard act to follow. I'm not going to sing, and I'm not, I didn't bring cookies, but I did bring fact sheets. That's kind of a poor substitute, but I will pass those out when I'm, when I'm through here. I'd like to thank Gordon for inviting me to come and share information about VIA, Mobility Services, formerly Special Transit, just to bring you up to date on the breadth of services that we offer your community. We want you to know how we can help you meet the mobility needs of your citizens who are unable to drive due to age, or income, or health condition, or disability. And we want you to know that we are a community transit resource for you. I know I had the opportunity to address this group last fall at your strategic planning retreat, but there are some new faces this year, and also, we've got some new things going on. So I appreciate the opportunity to come and give this update. When most people think of VIA, Mobility Services, or formerly Special Transit, they think about our buses, and the vehicles that operate in 19 different communities in this area, taking people to the doctor, to the grocery store, to, to see a friend, to basically meet their needs of daily living. And that's certainly the heart of what we do. Last year, we provided 126,000 door-to-door trips throughout the area, and we serve more than 2,000 individuals. But we are much more than just a provider of rides. We see ourselves as a one-call resource for people with mobility limitations, and for their families, and for the communities where there's a commitment to access and inclusion for all citizens. So in addition to our door-through-door service, we also provide mobility options counseling for people who may not know what options are available to them. We have two mobility specialists who work with people to figure out what their needs are, what options might be available, and to then help them access those options. Last year, we did over 500 individual travel plans for people that were looking for assistance with transportation. We also provide travel training to teach people how to use the fixed route bus system. For many people, if they suddenly are faced with a life situation that requires that they give up the car keys, going out and getting on a bus may not be the first thing that they think of. But for some people who would be able to use the bus if they knew how, we can provide travel trainers who will come and meet with folks, and find out what their needs are, where they need to go, what are the routes that could get them there, and then we'll actually go with them, travel with them, until they're comfortable traveling independently on the, on the bus system. We also collaborate with a number of volunteer driver programs, such as the one provided by Red Cross, and also Care Connect has a medical mobility program that we are partner, partner with them to provide. So a little bit of information about Longmont-specific service that we provided last year. We have been serving your community since 1984. And last year, we provided 35,000 door-through-door driver-assisted trips to 787 individuals in the city of Longmont. We also developed more than 200 individual travel plans for people that were seeking help with, with their transportation. And we provided intensive one-on-one travel training to seven different individuals. The cost of the service in Longmont is just over a million dollars, and we leverage the funding that you provide to bring in additional funding. There's some federal funding, funding from Boulder County, from United Way, and from a number of private individuals and corporations and businesses. In addition to the services that I've just described, we also provide contract services. And our nonprofit exempt purpose is broad enough to include service under contract to governmental entities that will enhance mobility and relieve congestion in those communities. So we really are a full-service, a full-spectrum mobility service provider, and we are pleased to be able to share this information with you. Now, you may know, I'm sure you do, that we have recently changed our name. After 33 years of operating as Special Transit, we have been doing a lot of strategic planning in the last five years, really driven by the demographic changes that we all have been hearing a lot about. And I know, you know, that the overadult, the over-60 older adult population is going to double in 20 years, and the population of people over the age of 75 will actually triple. And of course, that's a real concern to us, because many of those folks are in the category of people that are dealing with mobility challenges. So as part of our strategic planning, we looked at what people know about us. We did surveys, we did focus groups, and we met with people that are both current customers and people that are potential customers, family members. And what we found was that the name Special Transit really did not describe the breadth of services that we offer, and it contributed to some misunderstandings of who we are and what we do, and who we serve. One of the interesting things that we discovered through this process was that the word "special" is not as welcoming to some of the people that we serve as we would like. Many people do not identify themselves as having special needs. And we found that the name Special Transit made people think that we were for somebody other than them, someone who was more disabled, or more needy, or less capable than they were. And we want people to know that if they're unable to drive, or if driving is not advisable for any reason, that they can call us, and we can help, help them find a solution, whether it's on our paratransit service, or one of the options that I just mentioned. In addition to the word "special" not being as special as it once was, we also realized that the word "transit" in this community, in this area, as you all have been talking about here tonight, makes people think of RTD. And we, we're not RTD. We want people to know that we are a private, nonprofit, independent organization, that we have a charitable purpose, we are, we have a mission-based organization, and that we are funded by private donations, and that we really need to grow our base of philanthropic support in order to be able to meet the needs of the future generations of older adults and people with disabilities who are going to be living with mobility limitations. So we just want you to know that we do provide our customers with transportation and mobility options that enable them to live a more independent and self-sufficient life. And we believe that at some point, nearly everyone will be touched by a situation where VIA could be helpful. And we just want people to understand that we're there for them, and we're there for you, and we have a new name and more services than we ever have had before, but we offer the same level of care and personalized attention that we've been known for, for the past 33 years. So I'd just like to thank you for this opportunity to help me spread the word about VIA, and, and for letting me talk about our commitment to mobility for life. So thank you. Do you have any questions?
Does anybody have any questions for you now? Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Santos. I don't have a question, I just want to thank you for all your hard work. What you do provides a great service to our community, and I just want to thank you and your board.
Thank you, and thank you for your support. You've been a great partners with us for many years.
Would you like to get out a phone number, in case anybody's watching that may need VIA's help?
Sure, sure, sure. You can call us at 303-447-2848, and we'll make sure you get to the person that can be of most help to you. And you can also go on our website, www.viacolorado.org, and you'll see a lot of new information there about VIA, and how we can help meet your needs. Thanks so much.
Thanks for coming, and as councilmember Finley says, you guys do a great, a great service, and a great job. So thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to first call, public invited to be heard. Just a reminder that please state your name and address. You have three minutes. And we'll start off with Doug Ward, followed by Elaine Coles.
And Elaine was going to be here, but it doesn't appear she's here as well. I appreciated when Mayor Baum used to, I'm sorry, council, or Pro, I'll get this right. Mayor Pro Tem Santos and councilmembers, I'll get that right. I'd appreciate when Mayor Baum used to ask people to say what they appreciated about the city. And for those of you who were here a couple of weeks ago, remember that Edwina Salazar and I were here talking about a joint effort we were going to do for a benefit concert for the Hour Center on the 3rd of March. And it was, it was an incredible success because of the response of the community, and, and once you kicked the Hour Center machine into gear, they, they reached out to a large number of people. Councilmember Witt helped us out with a posting on Facebook to her large distribution list. And we had approximately 200 people at the concert, over and above what we would typically have at one of those classical concerts, of which about 100 to 120 were first-time attenders at the, at a symphony concert in Longmont. And as a result of that, we raised our revenue on a, on a per-concert basis, about $3,000 over what we would typically expect. And out of that $3,000, a check was given to the Hour Center for $1,535, which they tell us would do about 750 to 775 meals. So we wanted to express our appreciation to the city for a great response, and for a wonderful opportunity for the symphony to work with the Hour Center, which is a great organization and an asset to the, to the city, and for those of you who, who spread the word and helped make this a success. So thank you all, thank you, the city of Longmont.
Thank you, Doug. I'll ask if Elaine's here, if she made it. No? Okay. Diane Wood, followed by Fred Day.
Good evening, councilmembers, Mayor Pro Tem. And my name is Diane Wood, 6914 St. Varane Road. And I'm here to make some comments that are related to the airport master plan extension of the runway at the Longmont Airport. In my opinion, the runway should not be as extended, because it will encourage and increase additional air traffic. Being safety-conscious, this will increase the possibility of accidents. The FAA does not require private... The FAA does not require private aircraft owners to carry insurance. If an accident does occur, there is no insurance. Who pays? Does the Longmont Airport require the aircraft base there to carry insurance? Councilmembers believe that the runway extension will lure business into Longmont. I don't buy that belief. Companies looking to establish here will look to the city for tax breaks, various incentives, and we're located in a fantastic part of Colorado. We've got easy access to Buckey Mountain National Park, a lot of open space, a lot of opportunities. We're also located between two large think tanks, CU and CSU. Companies are lured by capable, educated people. My suggestion is to lure light business, enlightened, guts-real business, and high-tech businesses. This would bring in many opportunities for revenue in the Boulder County area. In my 40 years in business, I never heard a company who would not locate in an area because an airport was not in their backyard. It's the tax breaks and the incentives. I ask you to give this serious thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Fred Day, followed by Edward Hostetler.
Good evening. My name is Frederick Day, and I live at 2342 Billings Lane. I want to speak tonight regarding the proposed regulation of oil and gas drilling and fracking within the city limits. Recently, you increased the moratorium by 60 days until June 16th. I do not believe this is enough time to research this complex issue and make informed decisions about regulating activities which could have a major impact on the health and welfare of the citizens of this city. There has been a lot of activity and new information generated recently regarding the hazards associated with drilling and fracking. This will only continue at an increased rate as more local governments get concerned with protecting their citizens. The Boulder County Commissioners have recently imposed a moratorium effective until August 3rd while they study the issue. At the County Commissioners' meeting on February 23rd, there was a strong indication that they may well extend that moratorium as more information becomes available. The city area is scheduled to vote tonight on imposing a moratorium on new permits so that they can draft new regulations. The state of Ohio has just imposed new stringent regulations regarding the underground disposal of spent fracking fluids due to increased threats of earthquakes. More and more issues associated with the newer techniques of drilling and fracking are surfacing every week. Now is not the time to rush through regulations without sufficient study and deliberation. A specific concern I had regarding the proposed city regulations is the deletion of the requirement for use of green fracking fluids. This is an example of a hasty decision made without sufficient time to look into the facts. It was made on the assertion by one constituent that there were no green fracking fluids available. This is completely contradicted by Halliburton Corporation, which has been touting their new green fracking fluid, Cleanstone. Halliburton has a website devoted to this. Their CEO has been going around the country promoting it, and their executives that publicly consume some of it to demonstrate its benign properties. This is but one of a number of green compositions or techniques now available to the industry. To not include the requirement for green fracking fluids or processes in a proposed regulations is, I believe, urging on a dereliction of your duties. To summarize, I urge you to extend the moratorium for as long as possible so that more research and study can be done before finalizing the new regulations. I believe that additional time is required to adequately research and to find specific requirements in a number of areas under consideration in the new regulations. I also strongly urge you to add the requirement for green fracking fluids or processes in the minimum and recommended requirements. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Edward Hostetler, followed by Jeff Collins.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and councilmembers for the Longmont City Council. It's actually Edward Hollister.
I'm sorry.
No, it was the line came down from the name out above it, and looked like the L's into T's, so. I'm here to talk about the airport extension of the runway. I thank you for the opportunity to express my wife's and my thought that this is wrong, and it's wrong for a number of reasons. Basically, noise, property value, and safety. And I know that you have all looked into this. A lot has been written, a lot has been said, but I think that we need to slow down and we need to look if, is there a better use for the property that the airport is currently on and move the airport out of an urban area into a rural area where the city can design around it. Right now, we have an airport surrounded by homes. As we expand the homes in Longmont, the building around it, whether it's along the runway, east-west, north-south, could a better place be found? Could a better use for the property that is currently being used for the airport be found? And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Oh, I need your address, please. Sorry.
6124 Treverton Drive.
Thank you. Again, your name and address, please. Jeff Collins, followed by David Hignite.
Jeff Collins, 3159 Nelson Road. I'd like to address the airport master plan as well, specifically the economic impacts. Chapter 8, which we've just received or discussed, was recently released. The airport master plan that you have before you is basically a wish list from the pilots who operate out of Vance Brand. The master plan says that itself. At a recent open house, I discussed the master plan with several pilots and asked them if they thought that was reasonable, that it was basically their wish list. And they said they thought it was reasonable because they were going to pay for everything out of their aviation fuel taxes. But we all know that's not the case. You only got to look at tables 73, 74, 75 to see that 2/3 of the cost of these additions which are proposed will be paid for by us. And by us, I mean all of you, me, all of the people in the room, and all of the people in Longmont. We will be paying for this for the next 20 years. Having put that one to rest, my next question was, do they think it's reasonable that all of us subsidize the pilots to a tune of $15 million? And they said, yes, they did think it was reasonable because of all the benefits that Vance Brand Airport brings to Longmont. So I asked them, what benefits does Vance Brand bring to Longmont? And of course, they referred me to chapter 8. We went through that with somebody from J Aviation luckily who was there, and we looked at the 117 jobs, the $2.5 million payroll, the $99 million of output. And I asked the man from J Aviation, how many of these jobs are held by Longmont residents? How much of this output occurs in Longmont? And the answer was, nobody knows. These are not jobs which are held by Longmont residents necessarily. They may be, but nobody knows. And the output may occur somewhere in Colorado, but nobody knows where. So of course, we had to conclude also that the multiplier impacts shown in table 8.5 also occur somewhere in Colorado, but nobody knows where. To any conclusions that allocate any specific amounts of these jobs or economic impacts to Longmont, I just wish for thinking at best or deliberate misinformation at worst. I did ask J Aviation why they hadn't quantified the economic benefits or the jobs for Longmont. And they said, nobody asked them to. No one was willing to pay the money necessary to do those studies. Mr. Protem, mayor, in light of this knowledge, I challenge you and your fellow councilmembers to hold up the vote on the master plan until the information about the economic benefits and the jobs for Longmont is actually known. It may take a while, but I think it would be only fair to the residents who suffer from the airport to know what the benefits are. And if you don't take up that challenge, I challenge you then, all the members of the council, to tell us why you choose to support this master plan, if that's what you do, so that each one of us, all of us here collectively, are actually going to be subsidizing the pilots to $50,000 each to support their hobby. I wonder if you would give a show rationale for doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. David Hignite, followed by Erica Chergan.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Santos and city councilmembers. My name is David Hignite. I reside at 4615 Portopino Drive, Longmont. I am urging you to line item veto that portion of the airport master plan that recommends the runway extension for Vance Brand Airport. The result of human nature's attraction to take the path of least resistance is a history littered with economic fiascos such as a recent housing crisis. It is easier to believe what we want to hear as the consultants descend upon us with reams of their biased opinions. It is easy to overlook the average salary at the airport, shown in the AMP, which is about $19,000. That is 2,000 less than a person over 18 earns without a high school degree. The per-capita income in Boulder County, per data in chapter 2 of the AMP, is about $50,000. Even if you double the airport salaries, they are still substantially below local and state per-capita income levels. The pilots and businesses at the airport have been riding the gravy train, thanks in great part to the tax-paying air traveler. They get a federally subsidized runway to run their businesses, for which they pay no landing fee, and pay salaries that are substantially below county and state income levels. While they consume the gravy, they pound the table demanding your approval for a federally-funded extension that will increase noise abuses over a large segment of Longmont and Boulder County. It is fashionable lately to put pressure on local and federal governments to create jobs. The path of least resistance has led to claim by some city officials that seven or eight companies would move to Longmont if the runway were extended. No evidence has ever been put forth to support those claims. A longer runway means bigger planes. A longer runway means more planes. Otherwise, why do it? It is not safety. The airport is safe as it is. We could extend the runway to Timbuk too, and the airport would be no safer than it is today. A longer runway means increase in the airport influence zone. A larger AIZ means more federal control within our community. That is never a good thing. Are the homeowners in the increased zone in Longmont and in the county aware through plat information or disclosure documents that they will have been included in the AIZ? The path of least resistance is very tempting. I urge you to resist that path and veto the runway extension. It is easier to say yes than to say no. Thank you.
Thank you. Erica Chergan, followed by Jeannie Scholl.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and members of council. My name is Erica Chergan, and I live at 6274 Treverton Drive. I've attended several of these council meetings and a few of the open houses for the airport master plan. I myself have voiced concerns, along with many others, about the noise levels of the existing airport and the guaranteed increase in noise levels should the airport be expanded. I've not heard any responses from the members of council on how they expect to deal with mitigating airport noise now or in the future. I am against the expansion and ask the council to think long and hard before they sign off on the master plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeannie Scholl, followed by Anita Berkey-Bragg.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, members of council. My name is Jeannie Scholl. I live at 6274 Treverton Drive, Longmont. I'm here tonight to ask you to remove any expansion of the Vance Brand Airport runway from the current master plan update. As you are aware, there are significant issues and public concern about the current impacts, noise, of the airport, and these issues remain unresolved. I believe the current voluntary noise abatement guidelines are either ignored by pilots or pilots are not educated and informed about them. I would like to believe the latter. The zones or areas identified for pilots to avoid, neighborhoods to the west, areas with livestock, and stay above 1,000 feet AGL above ground level if possible, is often ignored, especially by pilots performing touch-and-goes over and over and over and over and over. I encourage you, and I know Tim Barth would take you to the site that can actually demonstrate to you the web tracking, the radar tracking of these flights that are over and over and over and over. And that's online, and it's easily accessible. I have also suggested to Tim Barth about exploring an incentive program to pilots to possibly improve compliance with the voluntary noise abatement guidelines. The draft revised airport influence zone, the AIZ, includes neighborhoods to the west that are currently identified as areas to avoid in the voluntary noise abatement guidelines, as well as additional schools, public gathering places, inside and outside the city limits. What is the plan to mitigate the impacts to existing landowners, businesses, and schools that would be in the revised AIZ if the runway is lengthened? How does the city work with the county in regard to unincorporated areas affected? How will this affect zoning, public safety, emergency preparedness, planning, home valuations, real estate disclosures, and most important to me, quality of life? You have made a very important, prudent, and commendable decision about putting a moratorium on fracking so that you could become more informed about the impacts, costs, benefits, and regulatory alternatives related to gas and oil extraction. Please make the same decision about an expansion of the runway at Vance Brand. Take the time to address, resolve, and manage the current noise issues and impacts from the airport before you expand its zone of influence. Thank you.
Thank you. Anita Berkey-Bragg, followed by Howard Morgan.
I'm Anita Berkey-Bragg. I live at 2549 Elmhurst Place, which is just under three miles from the airport. I urge the council to please pass the runway extension in the master plan. It's been a long, long time coming. I am not a pilot, but I do know a lot about flying, and I know it would make it safer for the little airplanes, not just larger airplanes. I also would like to say that I do not know a single pilot that does not have insurance. I happen to know some of this from a personal experience. I had to have an airplane flown to Nebraska, and I had to get special insurance for that specific pilot. So I urge you to please pass that master plan with the runway extension. Thank you.
Thank you. Howard Morgan, followed by Creighton Stewart.
I'm Mayor Protem and councilmembers. Howard Morgan's my name. 1932 Amethyst Drive in Longmont is my address. I live here mainly because of the airport. I've been on the airport for about 18 years, and in that 18 years, there's been very few, if any, major improvements. I've been in business aviation for some time in my career and been all over the United States, Mexico, Canada, and seen facilities that attract business aviation. And our airport is very lacking in amenities for business aviation. And I think we can attract some businesses by doing the improvements that we've covered in the master plan. We've had luckily five new companies come to Longmont because of the airport in the last year, and I think we can do far better than that. One of our board members, John Dolce, has done a survey on the number of business flights in the last five years by tracking instrument flight plans, which is the only way you can track them. And the numbers that you come up with is very revealing. There's a lot more business flights than we had in mind in the beginning. And I think in the near future, he'll be giving you a presentation on what he's found, which is really good. So you've already approved the first five chapters of the master plan, which includes the runway extension. And tonight, you'll be getting a presentation on the last three chapters, and I would hope that you would see fit to pass the master plan as is presented by the board and the J Aviation. I'd just like to add one more thing. I've been in this business for a long time, and I don't know of anybody that flies an airplane that doesn't have insurance. That's just not true. Thank you for your interest.
Thank you. Creighton Stewart, followed by Judith Blackburn. Creighton Stewart, followed by Judith Blackburn.
Mayor Pro Tem Santas, council members, good evening. Creighton Stewart, one-zero-seven-seven-five North Sixty-Fifth Street, Longmont. Tonight JAVs is going to present its final pitch regarding the airport master plan. Now it appears the council will direct staff to complete a resolution to approve the plan and have that ready for council's March twenty-seventh agenda. Tonight is the last opportunity in the process to direct staff to write the approval resolution so as to reflect that runway extension has been removed from the plan. I don't really expect that to happen, but tonight's that opportunity. What's been missing from the whole process is a public hearing that deals with the intention to lengthen the runway, the single contentious issue associated with the plan. The attention throughout the process has been the plan, as expected. That's what this process is about. Concentration on JAVs' plan, not whether there's opposition to runway extension. I've always felt that the runway extension should be part of a plan only after the city initiated a standalone review and decision exercise. A series of public hearings dealing with the project that affects more than just aviation in the airport community, but the whole community of Longmont and its neighbors. There should have been a layback when, in anticipation of an update, and non-strong opposition, a preliminary city process, not driven by FAA requirements, guidance, or direction, but driven by Longmont's processes and Longmont's responsibilities to the sensibility of the community at large. That didn't happen, so I'd like the council to consider one of two actions. Two weeks from tonight, before the council approves the March twenty-seventh resolution, that the council open the resolution to a public hearing so the community and its neighbors have at least one opportunity to address the council's undivided attention in the form of a dedicated, public-to-be-heard, public hearing format. An opportunity for public record to have the pros and cons of runway extension heard, deliberated, and decided upon in the public eye. Or if the public hearing on a resolution doesn't fit the city's procedure, then two weeks from tonight, so as to allow further discussion amongst yourselves, the council remove the resolution from the consent agenda. Then during the follow-on discussion, the council tell the community and its neighbors what led to your individual decisions on runway extension. We, the people, really haven't heard the council's views on runway extension or its views on the merits and/or demerits of the pros and cons expressed by any of the extension combatants. I don't know how else to get some satisfaction that the extension arguments have been heard and deliberated upon in public by the decision-making body. Thank you.
Thank you. Judith Blackburn, followed by Kimberly Gibbs.
Good evening, Judith Blackburn, thirty-seven-twenty-four Oakwood Drive. I have a new suggestion tonight relative to how we use the moratorium currently in place to delay applications on hydraulic fracturing. So far, we have been talking about state regulation and the city's limited authority to challenge it. The question now becomes, have you heard enough and seen enough in the past few months to be just the slightest bit worried about the impacts of fracking to question its appropriateness in this place, our city? Your answer to this question determines next steps. I recently sent an open letter to each of you describing the differences between background research on fracking done by county staff at the direction of the commissioners and research done by city staff at your direction. The difference was that county staff talked about the impacts of fracking on citizens, health risks, hidden infrastructure costs, property values, et cetera, all things that elected officials are responsible for, whereas city staff has so far merely presented a legalistic framework for how to indemnify themselves and you in the face of state preemptions. Well, it's a good thing we have a little more time under the moratorium to research our alternatives further. If, and I give that word emphasis "if", you would like to prevent urban fracking, assuming that you thought you could, you might reframe it as a rights issue rather than a regulation issue. You could redirect city staff to research the U.S. Constitution, the Colorado Constitution, and our status as a home-ruled city to challenge preemption at its core. One course of action open to you while you've got a moratorium would be for you to revisit our city charter. You could ask staff what it would take to initiate an amendment to the city charter banning fracking within city limits. Or you could decide to put this momentous decision to the voters. Many of us would help you with such a campaign. However, if you're fine with Big Oil's PR campaign commissions and now task force about how safe and green and inevitable directional hydraulic fracturing is, then you probably won't welcome this suggestion, but there it is. And for now, the ball is in your court. Thank you.
Thank you. Kimberly Gibbs, followed by Sally.
Good evening. My name is Kim. My name is Kim Gibbs, and I live at seven-four-six-eight Mount Sherman Road. I would like to comment on the airport master plan and urge you to remove the runway extension from the plan. I believe the runway extension will result in more environmental impacts and especially noise. A major justification for the airport expansion is that it will create jobs. Chapter Eight of the master plan, titled Airport Economic Impacts, summarizes the economic benefits of the airport on the region's economy. For example, quote, "For two thousand and ten, the airport supported an estimated two hundred and fifty-seven jobs in Colorado that earned a total of five-point-three million dollars," end quote. First, these jobs are not necessarily in Longmont. And second, if you do the math, that works out to an average salary of twenty-thousand-six-hundred, six-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars annually. The master plan does not provide any context for these figures. Chapter Eight devotes a lot of attention to the Mile High Skydiving Center as they are one of the two top employers. The report states, quote, "In two thousand and ten, the payroll and benefits at each of these companies exceeded one hundred thousand dollars." Is that a lot? Does the economic benefit justify the cost to the community of living under a blanket of noise? Let's put the one-hundred-thousand-dollar payroll in perspective. For comparison, Chapter Eight mentions a few specific companies in Longmont: IBM, Seagate, Intel, and Amgen. These companies employ skilled workers. The average salary for a software engineer is about a hundred thousand dollars for one employee. While a healthy economy relies on a diverse economic base, higher salaries generate bigger impacts within the local economy. Consider also the new Covidian Research and Innovation Center located in Gunbarrel, just down the road. Covidian employs eighteen-hundred skilled workers. They chose to locate in Boulder County because, quote, "The culture of innovation here is second to none," end quote. These are the businesses that will lead to economic prosperity. They don't require being next door to an airport, and they don't rely on government subsidies to remain viable. The way to build a strong economy in Longmont is by providing a high quality of life and attracting manufacturing and high-tech companies, not by extending the runway. Thank you so much.
Thank you. There was a period missing, so S. Allen. That's right.
That's Steve Allen. You don't tout that because you guys are old enough to remember.
I actually remember Steve Allen.
Yeah, that's what I said. You're old enough to remember. Eleven-twenty-seven, so don't expect a comedy staff here anyway. Eleven-twenty-seven, Twin Peaks Circle. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it. I know these are long hours for you all. It appears that we, as Longmont citizens, are being asked to just trust us. We know what is best for your community, and a large, shiny, upgraded airport is just what your community needs. First, we were told that this large, shiny, upgraded airport would bring large revenues from fuel generated from big fancy corporate jets. However, a majority of these fancy corporate jets are C-class. And due to the fact that the FAA is not interested in expanding the Vance Brand Airport to a C-class airport, these large revenue gains will not materialize as promised. Second, we were told that this large, shiny, new airport would attract large corporations to Longmont due to the fact that said corporations would be able to land their large fancy C-class corporate jets at Vance Brand Airport. Here again, the fact that the FAA is not interested in expanding the airport to a C-class, this promise is another thing that doesn't hold water. Third, it appears that the majority of the individuals who want the airport to be expanded tout that you should simply trust the advisory board. They're the experts. However, if I'm not mistaken, they are the ones who put together the takeoff and landing guidelines that clearly picture the pattern north of the airport to be south of the railroad tracks. Based on regular observations, if one or two planes a day follow these guidelines, I would be surprised. Maybe before we expand their playground, we should get them to follow the guidelines they put together. Fourth, revenue information in the past in the master plan is misleading due to the fact that many cases, many of the numbers that were generated from sources other than Vance Brand. As an example, over several months in two thousand and eleven, visiting pilots were invited to fill out a survey upon arrival. Because only a few visiting pilots responded to this survey, data developed from the survey was combined with a large Smith-associated database. This information can and does not accurately reflect the spending habits of visiting pilots or skydivers at Longmont Hotels, Restaurants, or other businesses. For all we know, they simply drive to Boulder and spend their vacation money there. Finally, we have lost our new bookstore, countless businesses. We have a blighted mall, a defunct sugar factory. I guess the next time I need a new book, I'll have to drive to Boulder, and since I'm already there, I might as well go see a movie there, maybe dinner, do my grocery shopping before I come back to Longmont. Expanding the airport is not the answer to Longmont's economic issues.
Thank you. Gail Allen, followed by Strider Binstone.
Sorry. Gail Allen, one-one-two-seven, Twin Peaks Circle here in Longmont. And I'm here to talk about the airport master plan. The economic impact study in the airport master plan is a house of cards. It is not built upon facts, but abstracts, generalized estimates, assumptions, and small statistically inadequate survey sample sizes. It reminded me of reading in college in economics class a book called Lying With Statistics. For example, in the master plan, a positive economic impact includes the payroll of the truck driver who delivers the fuel to the airport. While following that logic, perhaps they should consider the cost to the city sanitation district for those pilots and skydivers who utilize restroom facilities. I believe we need and deserve actual facts. I believe the airport enterprise has not done their due diligence. A fact you all know, there are hundreds of residences west of Hoover Road that are negatively impacted by the airplane noise, particularly in the summer. Before you allow any runway expansion, we need facts. One, the airport needs to purchase an airplane operations counter to actually count how many planes are using our airport, how many operations are occurring. Two, the airport needs to purchase a noise decibel machine and rotate it throughout the neighborhoods in the airport influence zone. Then you'll have a better grasp what is the noise impact. Three, the airport needs to have an airport manager on the ground seven days a week. Planes fly seven days a week. Weekends desperately need coverage to enforce violations. Since none of these facts are available to date, I suggest we not expand the runway. Let's collect this data, and in seven years, when the airport master plan comes up again, you can revisit it if it's appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Strider Binstone, followed by Shelley Basman.
Greetings. I'm Strider Binstone, nine-fifty-one Seventeenth Avenue. Sunday morning, I was criminalized, seven AM Sunday morning, for caring for my sixteen-year-old blind doggy, lady girl, who has been blind for two years, and I have to take her out like twenty times a day and all night because of her diabetes. Because she stepped outside, one foot to my side, on God's green earth with no chain on her neck. What is really important and what is a crime in this country? Second, I am outraged by the despicable assault on women by America's favorite fascist, Rush Limbaugh, and more so by the charming chorus of his minions and hate-filled followers, and even more so by the approving and deafening silence of the group now clamoring over each other to try to become president of this great country, which, if you check, still includes some women. When his free enterprise advertisers decided to no longer support his vile, evil swill, now he claims he is the victim of a conspiracy. Humanity is trying to evolve. Some want to roll it backwards. Some of those are called Taliban. Sixty years ago, when I was the age of these Girl Scouts who were here, I had never heard of a female person holding a public office anywhere in the world, except for Queen Elizabeth. I had never heard of a black person holding a public office anywhere, anywhere on earth, like city council, or judge, or president. I have been personally involved in this struggle all my life for democracy and decency. I am proud of the wounds which I still carry in this continuing struggle to create a livable and humane world. Let us keep a real goal in mind when we gather in political discourse. Thank you.
Thank you. Shelley Basman.
Good evening. Shelley Basman, thirty-four-fourteen, Lakeview Circle. Would I share the surface rights with Joe, who's over at the Justice Center with the civilian volunteer police? Fellas. I learned something new about wearing gas every week. Last week, we were in Erie for a meeting of Erie Rising. It was very well attended, as you might imagine, after the NOAA study was released, which accidentally discovered air contamination in Erie by methane and other petrochemicals, volatile ones, in excess of those in Pasadena and Houston. At the meeting, it was refreshing to see three of Erie's town trustees there, participating in the panel. And there also had a hydrologist who observed that the governor's new task force does not include anyone from academia. And they do study this stuff in universities. There is knowledge there that is not being accessed by the governor. I learned at that meeting that operators are now flaring natural gas. This happened when I was, I mean, they did this when I was a child, and we would travel through Bakersfield on the way to family vacations, and kids would ask, "What's that?" I mean, the flares on the horizon. And my mother was very troubled, the adults were then, because they drew for the oil and up came natural gas. One of the reasons is that operators do not bother to install pipelines to the new wells. And the gas price is so low now that they just flare it. So not only do we destroy water, clean, pure, treated water in the process of getting this natural gas, we destroy it once we get it up to the surface and keep the little bit of oil, a lot of which is now being exported. The United States is a net exporter of petroleum-based products, and a lot of those is, a lot of that is the light crude oil. So that's the thing that used to go into our regulations, is that the pipe, the pipeline be put into the wellhead before it is put into operation. Oh, I also got to see a video taken from the window of the Beach families home. The wellhead is 350 feet from their home, but the tank battery is 280 feet. And in this video, you can see the heat signature coming off those tanks, those tanks. It's benzene, it's VOCs, and it's 280 feet from their home. And this went on for eight months.
Thank you.
You're welcome. There is a way to ban it.
Thank you. Your time is up.
I know, and I hope you'll find research.
Thank you. Okay, public invited to be heard is now over. Gordon, we're ready to go on to items on second reading.
Mayor Council, the items under 8A are three farm leases, and they involve different ordinances, so we'll read each of those into the record, and then you can have a public hearing. Ordinance 2012-14, public hearing and second reading of a bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the real property known as the Cousteau property, the premises to Jim Wilde, tenant. And Mayor, these are mostly renewals, and if council has questions about any of these leases prior to a public hearing, and we have staff here to answer them, but we do not plan to make a presentation unless you have a desire to have a presentation.
Thank you, Gordon. Do members of council have questions regarding these leases? Okay, then we'll open up the public hearings. I will open up the public hearing for ordinance 2012-14. I have no one signed up to address the council regarding this matter. Is there anyone like to speak? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing for ordinance 2012-14. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Finley.
I move passage of ordinance 2012-14.
Second. It's been moved to second. Is there any other further discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. It passes with Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Levison absent.
Next item is ordinance 2012-15, public hearing and second reading of a bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the real property known as the Echo property, the premises to Patricia Echo, tenant.
Okay. Are there any questions? Seeing none, I'll open up the public hearing for ordinance 2012-15. I have no one signed up. Is there anyone out in the audience that would like to address the council on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Samori.
I would move ordinance 2012-15.
Second. It's been moved to second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. It passes with Councilmember Levison and Mayor Coombs absent.
Next item is ordinance 2012-16, public hearing and second reading of a bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the real property known as the Bullender property, the premises to Tom and Diane Seaman, tenant.
Okay. Are there any comments regarding this from members of council? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing on ordinance 2012-16. I have no one signed up on the list. Is anyone like to address the council on this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Councilmember Witt.
I'd like to move ordinance 2012-16.
Second. It's been moved to second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. It passes with Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Levison absent.
Mayor Council, 8B is ordinance 2012-17, public hearing and second reading of a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the vacation of a portion of a public alley generally located north of 15th Avenue and east of Main Street. Mayor Council, this is a routine matter that's been reviewed by the Development Review Committee, and it meets all of our requirements for abandoning or vacating public property. We do not plan to make a presentation. We do have staff here if you have questions.
Are there any questions or comments from council? Councilmember Bagley.
I move that we adopt.
Councilmember Bagley, we need to do a public hearing first.
Oh, do we? All right. Well, then I'll wait for my motion.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? I have one comment I heard from a member of the police department that was actually saying that this vacation of this right away would actually be good, so the National Guard can actually take care of it. There have been issues throughout the past, and the guard has actually said that they are looking forward to being able to maintain this property, so. I'll open up the public hearing for ordinance 2012-17. Is there, I have no one on the list that would like to, that's signed up to speak on this topic. Are there any members of the audience like to speak to us now? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Councilmember Bagley.
Now, I would move that we accept and pass ordinance 2012-17 as proposed.
It's been moved to second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. It passes with Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Levison absent.
Mayor Council, your next item is consent agenda. Item A is ordinance 2012-19, a bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to amend the following leases of real property at the Vance brand Municipal Airport. Hanger parcel F2D to Jamie Scherer, F2E to Brock Terrace, doing business as VT Enterprises, H14F to Douglas M. James, H66 to Pat Kaprowski, H65 to Romeo Charlie LLC, H69 to Bill Tanner, H17 to Bob Lehner, H59 to David W. Paul, SWP1 to National Ecological Observatory Network Incorporated, H13 to Jim Johnson, H24 to Steve Alderman, H50 to Hanger 50 LLC, H18 to David Pyle, and S87 and SH8 to LMO condo associates incorporated. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for March 27th. 9B is resolution 2012-11. This resolution approves an intergovernmental agreement with the state of Colorado for a state aviation grant to extend the taxiway at the Vance brand Municipal Airport. 9C is resolution 2012-12. This resolution approves an intergovernmental agreement with the Longmont Downtown Development Authority for support and services. 9D is resolution 2012-13. This resolution approves an intergovernmental agreement with the state of Colorado Department of Public Safety for a coal case assistance grant. 9E involves three contracts for the use of our firing range. The first one, resolution 2012-14, is an IGA with the town of Frederick for the use of the firing range. Resolution 2012-15 is an IGA with the city of Lafayette for the use of our city firing range. And resolution 2012-16 is an IGA with the city of Thornton for the use of the city firing range. 9F is authorize the use of $4,563 from your contingency fund for the new city manager's compensation. And 9G is amend the city manager's contract with the starting date of March 19th instead of April 2nd. And Mayor, Council, I do not need your removal for presentations or discussions.
Are there any items the council would like to remove? Councilmember Samori.
I would move the consent agenda as stated.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? The only discussion I'll do is the firing range. As Chief Butler mentioned, the interest in the firing range from other municipalities, you know, looking to buy time into, into the firing range is going to help make this a self-supporting range, so. Nice job for them. Councilmember Witt.
And I'd just like to add, great to go to the open house this, this past week, and I did tweet quite a bit from that, and from that I got a lot of people who are very interested in utilizing our new firing range, so we're excited about that.
Good point, Councilmember Witt. The public will, there is a public option that when it's ready, it will be rolled out in due time, so. The consent agenda's been moved and seconded. There's no further discussion. Let's vote. The consent agenda passes with Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Levison absent. Ready for general business.
Your first item on the general business is item A, and this involves recessing as city council and convening as Longmont General Improvement District Board of Directors.
Thank you. Councilmember Witt.
I would move that we adjourn as city council and convene as the board of directors of the General Improvement District.
It's been moved to second. Any further discussion? Let's vote. The motion passes with Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Levison absent.
And Mayor, resolution for GID 2012-1, Jim will explain what this is involving.
Hi, Jim.
Mayor, our chairperson, Santos, I'm not sure what that is for the GID. And members of the GID Board, Jim Golden, Director of Finance Support Services. Actually, I think this might be on your consent agenda, but anyway, this is the IGA between the General Improvement District and the DDA for Administrative Services for 2012. No major changes from last year, just a small dollar amount change in dates. Can I answer any questions you have? Kimberly McKee is here as well.
Are there any questions for Jim? No questions from the board of directors. Okay. Are there any motions or any questions? Ask again. Council, Director Samori.
I would move resolution LGID 2012-01.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Director Bagley.
I just wanted to hear you call me Director Bagley.
Director Bagley, Director Witt, Director Finley, Director Samori. No further discussion. It's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. It passes with Director Coombs, Director Levison absent. Director Witt.
I would move that we recess as the board of directors for the General Improvement And reconvene as Longmont City Council.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Let's vote. The motion carries with Mayor Coombs, Director Coombs and Director Levison absent. And I know we're going into the next item, so I'd like to take at least a 10-minute break.
And Tim Walton Company will be assembling here to make your presentation.
Thank you.[1424.83] Thank you.[224.84]
Public invited to be heard is it's it's tech to calculate. And I want to give you an example of this map, which actually shows the instrument flight rules or the IFR flights in and out of the Longmont Airport from May 2010 to May 2011. There were approximately 732 flight plans filed with the FAA that either had Longmont as the destination or the origin of the trip. That connected Longmont to 30 different states. I think sometimes we 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 get pretty dialed in and focused, but one of the reasons that the FAA has a vested and a financial interest in Longmont Airport is because it connects this country together with about 5,200 airports across the country. So there's a federal investment in the national airport system and Longmont plays one of the vital roles to that. The other thing I'll say about this this graphic is about less than 20% of the flights that come into or that use the the Longmont Airport are under IFR rules. So you're looking at a little less than probably 20% of the flights that come in and out of the airport. I'm going to turn it over to Lois to kind of walk through some economic facts and figures, and I'll turn it to you.
Okay, thanks Travis, Mayor, Pro temp and council members. We're going to talk, I want to give you a little overview of how we approach the economic impact. There's lots of details in the chapter, but give you the the big picture right now. When we looked at the direct impacts of the airport, we're really looking at three components of activity at the airport. And this information we collected directly from the airport, so we're pretty sure about what's going on there. And what we looked at was the on-airport businesses. They provided us surveys of direct employment, what they were paying for wages, what their gross sales were. And we also discussed this with the airport manager to what levels of activity and expenditures were going on just to maintain and operate the airport. We looked and we asked every one of the businesses on the airport what they were spending over the last four years for capital improvements. And we tried to average that because you, as you probably know, capital improvements are lumpy. Some years you spend some a lot, sometimes you spend just a little. So we averaged it over four years. And then we looked at visitors and some of the visitor surveys that were done were done for pilots and then we extensively looked at mile-high operations and the visitors there. And just so you have an idea of like who the other visitors are to the airport, we do know from the flight plans and when they come in that there are organizations like Home Depot and Lowe's and Murdochs and Wells Fargo Bank and Seagull and Amgen are all companies that are using the airport and bringing some of their customers or other employees in and coming through the Longmont Airport. So those constitute what we would consider the direct tangible impacts that we're pretty sure are going on at the airport. Now, what do we do with this information? And one of the ways to look at economic impact is we we say, well, how can we measure that impact? And the three ways that we look at, and this is an FAA-approved approach here, is that we look at direct employment, which is 72 jobs on the airport. We look at the payroll, the wages and benefits spent for that. And then a measure which is a little, sometimes a little hard to describe, but it's the output. It's, you know, what are the gross sales of the businesses and for government agencies on the airport? What we do is estimate what their payroll and operating expenses are. And we we refer to that as the as the government agency output. So you can see that there's a little overlap between payroll and output. So we try to keep those measures separately and think of it really as what are the different dimensions of economic impact rather than some additive figure. The direct impacts that we found, and again, this is based on surveys, were 72 direct employees at the airport for a payroll of about 1.3 million and an output of about 7 million. The capital improvement projects, it's not a lot of jobs, but it's a lot of output. There was a lot of expenditure over the last four years. And the visitor-related impacts generated about 38 jobs, 909 payroll and 1,006 in output. So this is what we considered when we looked at that first drawing of like what are the direct activities at the airport that we could say, you know, we know for sure that this is going on. Now, what gets added to that is what we're calling the multiplier effect. And the multiplier effect is when we look at businesses, in order to run their businesses, be it an airport business or hospitality business, supporting visitors that come in here, they have to bring in a lot of supplies, parts and materials, equipment, office supplies, restaurant and hotel supplies. And these are some of the multipliers for the ongoing businesses that are at the airport. The other type of multiplier that we look at is employer spending. And this is for all the wages and jobs that we show that are directly related to the airport. The people that take their wages and then they spend it, they spend it in the community, they spend it in, you know, in the region. And there was, you know, a little bit of discussion about, well, where does that money get spent? And I think we have a reasonable assurance that it gets spent in in the area, but we don't know exactly how much of that expenditure from a multiplier standpoint happens right within Longmont. If you begin to add together the direct and the and the multiplier effects, you can see that the numbers ratchet up from the direct the direct impacts. So what we're talking about is an economic impact of 257 jobs, 5.2 million in payroll and 21 million in output. So that's what we're looking at as direct and indirect generation of economic impact for the airport. Now, I'm going to turn it back to Travis for the remaining presentation.
Capital improvements, kind of at the heart of the master plan. It starts to give you some options for the future. One of the things that I think we sometimes miss is, again, this is Longmont's plan. Longmont will determine what they want to put forward to the FAA and the state for potential projects. However, one of the qualifiers is that that those projects must be identified in a comprehensive airport master plan. So as part of the master planning process, the first thing that we do in the capital improvement section is identify the funding sources for those types of projects. The the primary force or the primary funding option, of course, is the FAA, the Airport Improvements Program. Right now, Longmont receives $150,000 on an annual basis, which is entitled to the city of Longmont. They can roll those dollars over, they can bankroll them. There's also some discretionary funds. A little bit more difficult to receive those types of funds as Longmont has to compete with airports like Aspen and Grand Junction and even sometimes Denver International Airport. Then there's a pot of money called the state apportionment. That pot of money is for airports within the FAA National Plan of Integrated Airport Systems, which Longmont is a part of. There's about $5.4 million allocated annually to airports in the state of Colorado for those types of airports. Another funding source is the Colorado Discretionary Aviation Grant Program. We'll show you some historical funding levels, but that funding program has continued to grow over the years and Longmont was one of the recipients of one of the larger grants from CDOT just this year as well. For some communities, the appetite for innovative financing, CDOT has a state infrastructure bank, a low-cost loan program that is also available to communities. And of course, then there's also private investment. Here's just a scenario of kind of a grant funding from a historical perspective. And you can see the in the in the left-hand side, the federal entitlement column, pretty much the dollars received from Longmont over the last six years have all come from that entitlement $150,000 program. Of just as almost the same significance, Longmont has received significant funding from the CDOT aeronautics program. You can actually see in 2012 for the completion of Taxiway Bravo, CDOT actually has more money into the project this year in 2012 than the FAA does. But it gives you kind of a snapshot of of the federal and state commitment that has been provided to Longmont over the last six years. As part of the master planning process, what we do is we identify projects that we anticipate will be needed to maintain and develop the airport for the next 20 years. The FAA likes us to give them a a kind of a perspective on when we think those projects could typically actually be required be required at the airport. So we've divided the CIP into three different funding cycles. The first one is the five-year CIP, and there's a number of of projects that we've identified, but we've actually highlighted the acquisition of 25 acres of land in one residence sometime around the 2013. The reason that we've highlighted that project is that is not only land that would be required for a runway extension if and when that project ever does come to fruition, but land for an airport is about the best investment you could ever make. It protects the airport from future encroachment and it provides a buffer. So anytime you have a piece of property where you have a willing seller and you have the commitment to move forward to protect the property, we think that's something that you should consider. And so that's something that we'd make a recommendation to the city, that you take a a good look at that to see what options you have of either acquiring the property outright with local funds or potentially partnering with the Colorado Department of Transportation as well. Other significant projects we've identified, just some maintenance of the airfield. You have a very good airfield today, but it is aging and it's something that you're going to have to continually take care of. The good news is that's a very high priority project for state and federal funds. And so we anticipate as the as the pavement continues to age, you'll have to stay on top of it to maintain it for its maximum useful life. Also, the acquisition of a snow snow plow and some general aviation improvements as well, safety improvements, runway end identifier lights, PAPs, those things that make navigational aids to the pilots a little more easy. The other thing I will say about about the entire list of the CIP, there is no magical list. You can, just because we've identified a project that could potentially go in 2017, 2018, the FAA and state will ask you each and every year to identify your current priorities. So it gives you the flexibility as projects and priorities change. This is just kind of a blown-up picture of the acquisition of 25 acres in the residence. You can see that that it will protect the approach to runway 11 for not only today but for the future as well. So just want you to kind of keep that in in the back of your mind and and keep that as a potential priority project that we believe would return benefits to the airport for many years to come. In the six-to-10-year capital improvement timeframe, 2017 to 2021, that is where we start to see potential to need for the runway extension in 2017. Primarily, one of the reasons we put it there is because that's when we think that the FAA program will start to to provide some flexibility to actually accommodate. While this list is is a is a project list of priorities from the local airport, you need to understand it also has to coincide with the priorities of the FAA and the priorities of the state. So while they're looking at your plan, they will also simultaneously be looking at about 50 other plans from airports from around the state, and they have to take your priorities and mix them in with theirs as well. So from our our knowledge, about 2017 is when that runway extension could potentially start to open up for some potential funding from FAA. Some other things that we've put into the six-to-10-year CIP, some more asphalt maintenance, the acquisition of a sweeper and the aircraft equipment wash pad, which is identified by a number of the of the users, is something that would be ever priority to them. Once we get out to the 10-to-20-year timeframe, these projects are are ones that have the potential to be required. But again, by the time we get to these projects, some of these will will move forward as a higher priority, just based on the change that the airport and the economy goes through over the next three to five years. But one of the things we've identified is is maintaining the airport should be priority number one. Acquisition of a mower and a tractor, the installation of a Jet A fuel tank, increased holding days at Bravo 1 and Alpha 1. And again, some of these projects will will flesh themselves maybe more to the top of the list and some of them may stay out in the 10-to-20-year timeframe. One of the reasons that we put these projects in these groupings is that the FAA will look at your projects in terms of long-term and short-term. They will ask for you to provide a 10-to-20-year outlook, and those projects will go into a national plan that is provided to Congress that identifies potential needs for systems of airports throughout the country. So this data actually gets rolled up in a national perspective and reported to Congress, which then helps make federal funding decisions. When we kind of take a look at the 20-year CIP in total, you can see that 90% of of the FAA's portion is about 10.9 million. Congress actually, after 23 short-term extensions and over five years of FAA short-term extensions, finally came up with a long for long-term four-year bill. Unfortunately, in that in that four-year bill, Congress switched the funding formula, which used to be 95% federal eligibility and 5% local, to 90% federal eligibility and 10% local. So there were some some funding changes, and so our CIP had to reflect that. We also show about $4 million of of state participation at about 1.9 of local and of course some private participation as well. Total CIP of about $18.4 million over the 20-year planning period. Environmental considerations. As part of the master plan, we go through and we identify 18 different environmental categories. In each of those 18 environmental categories, we provide a cursory review of the environmental impacts. This is not to be confused with a full-blown environmental review. This is a cursory view which identifies which environmental processes you must go through on federally eligible projects before they can be constructed. There are three different levels of environmental review. A categorical exclusion, which is basically a review which determines that there is not a significant disturbance individually or collectively because of result of the project. And a good example of that is your Taxiway Bravo extension. That land has already been disturbed. It had to be walked and looked at to see if there were any environmental considerations that would be significant. It was determined that it was not. Each of those, what we call a cat X, is provided to the FAA for their concurrence. An environmental assessment is the next level of review. That's typically a an in-depth review that can take anywhere up to 12 to 18 months, which goes to each of the 18 environmental categories and identifies each and every impact to a greater extent. And then if there is a significant environmental impact, then we have the potential to go to a environmental impact statement, which is a full-blown environmental analysis, much more involved. Typically, anytime there's an EIS involved, the FAA will actually run that that study and they'll also select a consultant. So EISs are not run from a local perspective. So when we take a look at the environmental considerations and we cross-reference them to those projects on your five-year, 10-year and 20-year capital improvement program, the runway extension would require a full environmental assessment. The apron expansion, Taxiway B extensions, increased size of the Taxiway holding bays, they're all cat Xs. And then a number of projects which are not federally funded would not be required to go through a full environmental review, but just to meet local codes. Next steps. We'll be back here at the city council meeting on March 27th for the adoption by resolution, if so desired by the council. Once that's done, the entire plan is then submitted to the FAA. What the FAA does, once they see the plan, is they will do an airspace analysis. They will do a review of the document to to make sure that we've met all the standards and they will provide us their comments on the document for incorporation. Once that's done, the inclusion of the projects in the capital improvement program, which is basically an annual exercise that the Tim and the Airport Advisory Board, the city council will go through, which will actually provide your input to the FAA on which projects and which priorities you would like to see funded from the FAA. So with that, that concludes the last three chapters of your airport master plan. We'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Travis. Councilmember Samori.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Temp. Now, tonight, when some of the public was addressing us, several issues came up. Foremost is the insurance issue. Could you expand a little bit on that and tell us what the requirements are for insurance?
As a pilot, if I go and, let's say I want to go to Front Range Airport and rent an airplane, the first thing they're going to do is they're going to ask for my pilot's license and insurance. If I do not have insurance, they will have insurance for me. But there is an insurance requirement prior to when I lease or rent the aircraft. As part of an airport operator, the city, you guys require insurance for your tenants. And Tim was going to address some of those insurance requirements, so when you have people operating on and off the field, that you know that they have insurance. So I'll turn it over to Tim for that part of the answer.
Mayor Santos, members of council, each lease that comes before a council, you'll see has a comprehensive insurance section. We require for our standard hangar operator to utilize the city property is $600,000 per occurrence, what the city named as additional insured for each SBO or FBO, specialty base operator or fixed base operator, any business. Those insurance requirements exceed $1 million, up to about a $5 million level, again, what the city named as additional insured, depending on what type of business operation is taking place at the airport.
The other item that came up was the economic impact and some questions about the numbers that have been provided. Did all the companies that you surveyed provide answers as to how many employees they have and what kind of payroll they do and what revenue they generate?
Yeah, one of the challenges with economic impact is it's kind of like aircraft operations. It's it's survey out, data in. And one of our challenges with many local and small airports is many businesses do not want to report to us their payroll because they're small enough businesses and they they just don't feel comfortable. So in that instance, sometimes we will get a survey back that doesn't have complete information. So that's one of the challenges. Unfortunately, we didn't have the budget in in this project to actually go and and interview each and every employee out at the airport or employee at the airport. So we had to rely on survey information. So the the table that you saw with 72 employment or on-airport impacts with a payroll of 1.3, that was what was directly reported back to us from the survey that we provided to the tenants and businesses at Longmont.
That that number could potentially be a lot larger than what was reported.
It it could be. It could be, and that's one of our challenges. We just didn't have the time and the budget to go out and sit down and and then the other thing is it's voluntary information, but that is that is correct. It could be.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Temp Santos. Also, related to the economic impact, and I think it's a question that I heard being mentioned during the public invited to be heard, can you throw up the numbers again on economic impact? I have two questions. One would be, if you go back to the one that 21 million was one of the numbers, for example, what is that? Is that total money going into the future? So like discounted, is that net present value of all future monies coming in?
What the impact numbers reflect are 2010, so there's no future component to that. It's just what we found as of that year. So you have to think about the economic impact as a snapshot in time.
Okay, so what, okay, it's a snapshot of what? You mean, what I mean is...
So let's talk about what's it, what goes into in output.
Right.
Okay, so there's the direct part and there's the multiplier part.
Yeah, I see, I understand that. What I'm just saying is what does that, is it 21, 800, I mean, is it a 21.8 million per what?
21 million total output, so that includes all the gross sales and spending.
In the year 2010?
In the year 2010, for both the on-airport businesses, the visitor expenditures, the capital improvements and the multiplier effect.
Okay.
And if you look at the chapter, when we looked at what the direct impacts were, it was 9 million, something like that, so it's about half.
Okay, and now now my next question is, that is income, monies coming in and going out, et cetera. Did you guys look at all at the fixed assets that are around the airport? What I mean is, is my question is, you're the consultants, I'd be curious to know what happens to home values as you as you have airports? Do home values increase or decrease? And so and what is that figure compared to the 21.8 million?
Well, the short answer to that is, did we look at it? No. As a part of the scope, no. The challenge, and we've had this challenge from the very beginning, is providing a scope of work that the FAA would approve. And so we had a long conversation at the very beginning of this study is what should the scope be? And the challenge was, we had the FAA that said, we have an approved scope of work that goes into a master plan, whether it's Denver International Airport, whether it's Longmont, Colorado. And so as a part of that, we had to follow the scope of services that the FAA had that that basically Denver follows, and we did as well. So the answer to that was, did we look at the decrease in home values? No. Was it part of the approved scope of work? Is it is part of the approved FAA scope of work? No, it wasn't. Would we have liked to have done that? Well, we'd like to have done that, but it just, like I said, when we're dealing with the FAA and their majority of their funding, we just didn't have the ability, nor did we have the funds to have some somebody independently fund that type of scope of work.
So have you done those kind of research projects in the past?
No, and the reason we haven't is because, again, it doesn't matter where you're at, we we follow the approved scope of work to the FAA, and so that just has not been ever approved by the FAA, so.
Fair enough. Thank you. Are there any further questions from council?
Well, I'll say that it's seeing all the chapters, finally, and this conclusion. And some member of the public said, well, we want to know where members of council are. And I have been one, as particularly said, I wanted to see the master plan in its entirety before I made a decision. And seeing the master plan in its still draft form, I'm actually looking forward to seeing this come before council to be passed. You know, there is, you know, the the idea that we're going to be funding, funding millionaires in their in their little pet projects, you know, it doesn't ring for me. You know, I I've met some of these pilots and I know that these aren't people that are very wealthy. They fly. That is what they do. And you can say that about whether or not, you know, I don't ride the bus either, but I still pay an RTD. Yeah, not really. But still, there are things that we pay in our taxes that we don't use in everyday life. So I'm actually glad that this is in here. I'm glad that the runway extension is in here as a part of the master plan. Again, as I've mentioned in the past with with the prior council, you have to have everything in it to be a master plan, and that included a runway extension, whether it was feasible or not feasible to do. And I see that it is potentially feasible to do in the future. So Councilmember Whit.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Temp. Excuse me. Really appreciate the hard work that you've put into this. And I also want to appreciate the hard work of those who don't agree with this because I think we come away with a better product when residents are coming forward and saying, yes, but what about this? And what about this? And what about this? And that makes me feel better, actually, that we fully vet this plan. And it seems to me that every time I get asked a question, well, can you prove, can you guarantee me that this is going to lead to economic development? And, you know, I can't guarantee you that, but I feel that this is integral to an overall transportation plan for not only Longmont, Colorado, Colorado in general, but our nation. And so I feel that it is in the best interests of the city of Longmont and, quite frankly, the rest of the nation, that we do go ahead and keep the extended runway in the master plan. And I would direct staff to please prepare the resolution. And I make that in form of a motion.
Is there a second? There's a second. Councilmember Finley.
Again, this is a master plan and we will take it up on the 27th. And whether or not the FAA likes it is up to the FAA, so I'm actually looking forward to having that discussion with them. So if there's no further discussion, it's been moved in second to direct staff to bring back a resolution on March 27th. No further discussion, let's vote. No further discussion, let's vote. And the motion carries with Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Levison absent. Thank you for the hard work. Tim, thank you. Thanks to the members of the advisory board that are here. Thank you to the public for their pros and the cons. We really do appreciate it. And we'll look forward to seeing this on the 27th. Thank you. And we'll just give them a few minutes to move away. And we'll go on the final call, public invited to be heard. I do not have a list, but I'm sure there are folks that would like to speak to the council on final call. So if you'd like to speak to council for final call, public invited to be heard, here's your chance. Not seeing anyone raise their hand. Oh, Strider. Please remember to state your name and address, and you have three minutes. The microphone got turned off. There you go.
Hi, Gail Allen, 1127 Twin Peaks Circle, Longmont. The multiplier, you really need to look at that in detail as you read this, if you, because even on their CIP projects, they're saying, look at the economic impact, because we hired these workers to work on this project, so it's part of a payroll that they use to say, to flood that 21 million, to make it look like a larger output. You need to actually look at those numbers. They're kind of fudged in a very creative way. So if you take that away, maybe you will be able to see some actual impacts, as well as how is, how has it impacted economically our city? Well, we can find out better if we did surveys, if we had our local establishments and lodging say, are you here for the airport businesses? Are you here for airport activities? Yes, no. Submit that quarterly. We can do more to find out. All of these numbers are not substantiated by fact. The surveys, they just use general numbers from estimates from over countless years that they can then apply because they are not getting the facts. And thank you for pointing out property values. And the city could pay money to do those kinds of surveys, but the city probably doesn't want to expend that. But I would think it would behoove us to do that. Similarly, with quite a bit of concern going on with fracking of property values and safety, we've got concerns on the other end as well. Don't lose control of our city. We're losing control on fracking. The more you get, the federal government owns it, the more you lose control. You can't control what planes come in, what time they come in, you can't control anything. We're losing control of our city the more you expand things or allow things without putting stipulations. So, thank you.
Thank you. Again, please state your name and address.
Steve Allen, 1127 Twin Peaks Circle. I appreciate some of the answers, or some of the questions you set out to, specifically you. I'm disappointed that you allowed them to just walk away from it without actually getting a true conclusion. It was apparent that many of these questions were answered with half the answer, and half the answer is not the truth. It doesn't even come close to it. Unfortunately, these multiplier effects have no reality. I've been through, I'm an economic major, one of the things that they will tell you in beginning economics is multiplier effects are not a good way to actually highlight and deal with what is factual information, that what you are going to build for the future. They are straight speculation. And here again, back to the numbers. No one will explain where that $21 million is going. No one answered that to your question. Yes, we have $21 million. Where's it going? Who knows? Who cares? Who cares? It's $21 million. If 21 of those, if 20 of those million dollars go to Boulder, well, that does us a lot of no good, doesn't it? We don't know. And that's the simple fact. You did not get answers to your questions, and you let these people walk away. Even when I listen to the concepts and the statements about who's responsible to have insurance, and yes, it doesn't say the FAA does not require an individual pilot to have insurance. She's right about that. Now, I don't know about the regulations of the city, but it didn't sound like there was an answer that said, if a pilot owns a plane, like you own a car, like I do, I have to pay insurance, because there's a federal law that says I got to pay insurance. But I don't think there's a federal law that says they have to pay insurance. But I'd like a direct answer to that. An absolute answer that says, yes, if I own a plane and I land it at your airport and I run into somebody's house, then I know I have insurance to cover that. Didn't sound like I had a direct answer to that. Didn't say every pilot has to have. So this is where I get really frustrated when I listen to these and we let people walk away without actually answering. It's like watching a politician on the news when I want to get up and just shake them at the Republican debates and say, just answer the question. You know, give me a good, solid, yes, these are the conditions. Where is that $21 million coming from? Where are the impacts? What are the impacts to the community? Because if your home values drop 10,000 in this area, on an average, I am sure that there's over 3,000 homes in that area, and that math calculates well above and beyond the value of what we see for this instance. It doesn't sound good. If you calculate out the amount that these individuals get per salary, that's $18,000 an individual. These 72 people, that's not much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hello again. My name is Kim Gibbs. I live at 7468 Mount Sherman. I wasn't going to speak, but I was kind of inspired by these two guys. By their own admission, the economic impact statement of the master plan is limited in scope. It's intended to present the positive economic benefits of the airport, and that's an important thing to look at. But it doesn't present any information about the negative consequences that are coming from the airport, and especially from the noise issue. The reason people are upset about the runway extension, the airport expansion, is because the noise issue, which is real in the community, and is due in large part to the skydiving operation, has not been sufficiently addressed by the city, by you guys. And granted, the FAA does have a lot of control over what goes on at the airport, but you are the proprietor of the airport. You do have the authority to improve the noise problem. And without that, without taking a very strong leadership role to do that, I think you'll continue to face quite a bit of opposition and really bitter resentment about the noise that we all have to live under. But back to the economic impacts, there are real negative impacts from the airport because of the noise. People decide to move. They decide not to move here. Companies choose not to be here because there is a sense of a degraded surroundings. And it is caused in part by the airport noise. So I just wanted to present that to you, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Santos, City Council, and Strider Binstone, 951 Seventeenth Avenue. I'd like to go into a little different area, too, actually. One, there were some very significant Supreme Court decisions in 1837, which I don't know that they have been overturned yet, which specified that communities have the right to protect their health, safety, and welfare from corporate domination. Those things need to be looked into. Somewhat pursuant to that, of course, we have the fracking and the water quality and such, and I would just like to commend and appreciate that our council member, Brian Bagley, accepted his appointment by the president, as he said, of the Colorado Senate, to be on the governor's task force, although it is seriously questionable whether the task force itself is merely a cover for predetermined decisions in favor of COGA. And I think the populous population needs to look into all of these particulars and not to forfeit our public interest in our homes and our water to some predetermined decision before all the facts are in. Thank you.
Charlie Baston, 3414, right view. Alex, I'm surprised you didn't ask the question. Who owns the property rights under the 25 acres at the end of the runway? Information probably needs to be ascertained. Want to pick up where I left off? Just end following from Judy Judith, that there is an avenue, a possible avenue, for municipality to ban fracking within its borders. It's outside the box, but it isn't inside the heart of democracy, of human rights, our individual rights, our inalienable rights that were spoken of in the Bill of Rights and in the Constitution, and the rights of local self-government, of the people, that all government of power derives from the people. It's an amendment to our charter, and it rests upon those constitutional and inalienable foundations. And I hope you'll take the time to look into that possibility. Because there's a multiplier effect, too, on the wells that are coming. The benzene and all that is heavier than air. Union reservoir is in a bowl. This is a serious, turning the union reservoir, open space into heavy industrial zone is not what the city of Longmont's citizens wanted or want. Another piece, there's the stamped 2 well out there by Union. In January of 2011, the city received a report that there was groundwater and soil contamination out there in excess of state standards. And it was only February, the end of last month, that the city filed with the COGCC, the Form 18 complaint. And if we're going to have to rely on the COGCC for our enforcement, we need to inform them of when there is a problem on city properties. So hoping for the best, and extend the moratorium so we can look into all the possibilities, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in public invited to be heard? Then I will close public invited to be heard for this evening. Mayor and council comments? I'd like to go first. You know, it's, I heard some residents say that they don't potentially go and shop in Boulder and things of that nature. You know, I would think that you'd want to support your local municipal city by being able to spend money here that helps not only the parks, that helps our police, our fire, and other services that we provide here in the community. So I would encourage residents to, if you can't find it in Longmont, then go outside, but most things you can actually find in Longmont, and I would encourage you to shop Longmont. I do have concerns regarding the, it just seems like we're having doom and gloom, people coming up, that thousands of wells are going to sprout up here, or the airport's going to turn into DIA. And, you know, I haven't seen, so I'll challenge those people that have concerns. I'll challenge you. You said, somebody said the companies haven't come here because of a negative effect. Part of that negative effect is also not have, the grandiose doom and gloom rhetoric that continues. You know, do I say the Longmont's a perfect city? No, we have our troubles and we try to fix them in the best possible way we can. Be a part of the solution, you know? Don't try to be a roadblock to things that are, that could benefit this community. You know, we are working on the particular areas of our infrastructure. We have, we passed the 2-way telecom ballot. We are working on the alleyscapes down in downtown. There's a lot of things that we are working on in our infrastructure to make this a better community. The airport is one of them. Whether or not oil and gas is going to be a part of it, we'll just have to wait and see. Looking forward to seeing what's going to happen with the task force. We have a, in total amount, a six-month moratorium that people were down here begging and pleading with, but it just seems that, you know, whether it's the airport or gas, oil, and gas, if somebody gives you a number, it's not good enough. And that concerns me. I would just hope people would have an open mind and not be as closed-minded as I've seen some folks. So, Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Santos. I would like to talk about something positive in our community. The I Have a Dream Foundation is going to have a new class this next year, and to support that, they are having a breakfast on May 10th. I'd like to invite members of council to join me at my table to support the I Have a Dream Foundation. It's an excellent nonprofit. It will help students in our own community, and I hope you can join me at my table. Also, in honor of St. Patrick's Day this week, I would like to make my business of the week, Mike O'Shea's Restaurant. For the last 30 years, it's been a tradition of mine and many others to frequent Mike O'Shea's for a green beer. And it's, that restaurant has excellent customer service. When my 87-year-old father goes with his bride, they treat him so special, and they do that with a lot of folks. So my business of the week this week is Mike O'Shea's Restaurant.
Thank you, Councilmember Finley. Councilmember Whit.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. It's been a busy week. We've had lots going on, and I did just want to reiterate one more time, the shooting range is awesome, and people are really excited. And so even if you currently do not shoot, you should go out and have a look, because it is, it is a wonder to behold, and it is one of, I believe, one of only three indoor ranges of that length in either the state of Colorado or, dare I say, the region? Just the state. But it's very exciting, and I've had people from Thornton, Frederick, Firestone, Deacono, Mead, Berthoud, Boulder, Erie, all saying how excited they are to come and try it out. So it'll be open to the public early summer, and it'll be Friday nights, all day Saturday, all day Sunday. So the great thing about working at the local level of government is that you can actually see the fruition of a lot of hard work on the part of people who've been looking for a new location. Thank you, Gordon Pedro, for sticking with it and actually being able to see it completed. So, thanks.
Councilmember Samori.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I know that we have discussed the retreat, and the subjects, you know, were chosen and picked, but I feel that the subjects that we chose are not challenging enough for us to deal with in terms of long-term vision for the city of Longmont. I know the parks are an issue, but I feel that that can be addressed in a study session. And I'd like for us to think it over and see if we can't come up with something more challenging to work on. And the education piece, we really don't have any direct control over that. We can work closely. We can work closely with the St. Rain Valley School District, with Front Range Community College, but we can't really have a direct impact on that ourselves as a city council. And there are many other things that are facing the community that I feel would be more worthwhile for us to spend our two days on. So I'd like us to at least think about it and see if we can't brainstorm next week when everybody's here and get their input and feedback.
Thank you. Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Santos. We heard some pretty important issues tonight, the airport, fracking. I just want to point out how easy it is to get my vote. I am now in the pockets of the Girl Scouts of America. Just pointed out. So if everyone were to bring cookies, I just...
We can be bought.
We can be bought, because we passed that resolution like that. I saw those boxes, and I'm like, I'm there. A couple of things. Going along with education comment, I know that Don Hadad has been touting quite a bit. One of the things that we should probably talk about, if not at the retreat, but at a study session or whatever, the school district next year is going to be cutting adult education. So he's been making the public aware of that. One thing we can do is talk about whether or not the city is going to participate in that. Are we going to fund it? Are we going to offer facilities? Adult Ed probably plays a pretty big part in our community. We should probably at least discuss when that vacuum occurs, are we going to be playing a part to step up and assist? And the other thing is, I just want to give a shout out to Helen Brown at 103 Grant Street. She asked me to do something, and I just want to go on the record that I passed her name and address along to the city staff, so she knows that that was handled. And other than that, missed you guys last week.
Thank you, Councilmember Bagley. Councilmember Whit.
Circling background and addressing Councilmember Samori's points, too late, because we have already directed staff to start preparing these items for our retreat, and it would be rude to say, actually, no, now we're going to do this. But I do agree with your point that I think we need to start planning now what our retreat is going to be looking like next year. So, but it's been...because we have a new city manager coming on board, it's very up in the air, and we really have laid a very large piece of work on our economic development and other folks in order to bring back to us information. So I do believe they've already started working on that, and I think it would be not polite. And it's all good stuff. It's all good stuff, so I don't see that changing our plans right now would be prudent.
Councilmember Samori.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Well, I think we can still use whatever they prepare for us in a study session if it's not at the retreat, so I don't think it'd be a waste. And speaking of the new city manager, we really haven't given him a chance to say what he would like to participate in or what he thinks from an outside point of view.
Sandy, have we contacted Harold regarding our retreat topics?
Mayor Protem Santos, Members of Council, Sandy Cedar, Assistant to the City Manager, absolutely. Last time you asked me if we could send that information off to him and ask him if there was some portion of the retreat that he would like to change up or be specific before him. What he and I talked about was the idea that part of his contract is to have a 90-day plan of the types of things that you'd like for him to accomplish. And so what he would like to do is present you with a draft of that, but not probably at the retreat. It would include the items with the retreat, it would include the items that are carried over from the last year's work plans, and give him a couple weeks to kind of get his feet on the ground before he presents you with that 90-day plan. So he asked not to interrupt the retreat schedule, specifically with his pieces there. Obviously, if you all direct us to do something different, we certainly will.
Thank you, Sandy. Any other comments? Gordon.
Mayor, council, I was going to tell you that unless you have a particular item you want to talk about next week, we were going to suggest that you do not have your study session because the items that we had tentatively expected to be ready are not ready for a discussion. So unless you want to take up what I would think would not be a very good move to change your retreat topics around, we do not have an agenda that we think you would have a meeting for next week.
Is there any opposition to canceling next week's meeting?
No. No counseling at all.
Correct. And just a reception for Gordon between 4:00 and 6:00. And also, right. And also, just a reminder that Thursday, we will be meeting with Lee Kemp, 6:00 to 8:00, at the Senior Center.
Yes, Mayor, and I think that that's a very important meeting for the community to join in if they possibly can.
I would agree. City Attorney, Eugene May.
No comments, Mayor Protem.
Tried to get one out of him and couldn't get it done. All right. Thank you all for a nice evening, and we're adjourned.